Yeah.
Oh, no, no, this is it. Oh, no, he signed it. No, yeah, yeah, they're, these are real. No, these are real. No, those are real. No, no. Yeah, no, those are real. She's saying, of course, she's always a pretty good hand all the way. And nothing else is to be, he just signed his own. No. Oh, no, 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 no. No, he's still.
You know, but it was very.
Yeah. No, Sam.
Did you send it to me that way or did I just copy it? Did I?
I think I sent it to you.
Okay. I know. Well, I just took it.
Yeah, I read it on mine. I was like, oh, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This mic does work, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Pat Hume. I'm a council member here in town, currently serving as vice mayor. And I appreciate everyone coming out for the town hall this evening. I just want to remind you that, in case you don't know, Leatherbees is celebrating the opening of their Elk Grove store and also their anniversary tonight. So the Sundays are pretty set off just right up the street here. If you want to go and escape the heat. So I, I know that there might be some heat and anyway, we'll move on to things here. I was asked to introduce the congressman and I'm happy to do so. I've known Dan for several years now. And what impresses me the most is every time we get together, whether I go back to Washington or he comes out here, he always has some little nugget of what they're working on or some little bit of information that's kind of the things that are hurdles facing those doing their bidding in Washington these days. And then when he comes and does a town hall or whether he addresses a local group here, he always seems to be able to knit together this whole fabric of things that he's been working on and he does it here seamlessly and I just walk away impressed with the amount of data that he shares. So hopefully we'll be, we'll be able to get some of that this evening. Dan Lundgren has represented California's 3rd district, which stretches from Sacramento to the Sierra Nevada foothills since 2005. He graduated from the University of Notre Dame and received his law degree from Georgetown University. Dan serves as the chairman of the House Administration Committee and has a respective calling on the Judiciary Committee and the Homeland Security Committee, where he also serves as chairman of the Subcommittee on Cybersecurity, Infrastructure Protection, and Security Technologies. Member of Commerce from both sides of the aisle respects his thoughtful approach to problems, they know Dan Lundgren as a man whose experience today allows him to move out in front of the difficulties of tomorrow. Dan's relentless work ethic has earned a sterling reputation in the areas of promoting blood protection, championing small and large businesses, and continuing to protect us through his work with homeland security. Dan sees policy through the lens of a family man. He and his wife Bobby have three adult children, Jeff, Kelly, Kathleen, and six grandchildren, Reagan, Julia, Jack, Alexandra, Andrew, and Fiona. And so with that, you all didn't come out to hear me, so I'll get out of the way and turn it over to Congressman Lundgren. And it's, you want me to brief a little bit on the format or you'll handle that on the fly? Very good. He's ready to go and very capable, so thanks for coming out.
Okay, I'll just stand to start this off. I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank Pat for dressing up today.
Yeah, I thought town halls were roll your sleeves up kind of deal, so anyway.
Pat Hume for being here and doing the honors introducing me. We also have Steve Dedrick, council member here as well. He dressed up a little more. I appreciate that. I'd like to introduce some members of my staff. Brian Sychek, first introduction because he's the new chief of staff. He will be both here and in Washington DC. He's playing his time between the district and DC offices. Marilyn Erbs is my district director, meaning she basically runs the district office, oversees operations there, administers the appropriations in the office, and handles federal legislative affairs as well. And she's not quite a resident of Elk Grove. How many blocks outside? A couple miles down the road. Debbie Jones, our special assistant. Debbie's in the back. Debbie oversees the district office budget and the scheduling in the district office and oversees our excellent intern program in the district office. Primarily college students, we've had a number of law students as well, and we have a couple of high school students from time to time that do a great job for us. Bob Alerck is right there. Bob is our senior field representative and conducts district outreach in the counties that we now have, in the current district outside of Sacramento County, Alpine, Amador, Calabasas, and Solano. Oliver Chu, Oliver Chu who worked for my predecessor, also had a chance to work for the state, in the state legislature for former Senator Cox. Constituent service representative, he would be the one that you would talk to about citizen and immigration issues. He also helps us on military issues, postal service, and helps oversee the interns with Debbie. Michelle Panos is constituent services representative, handles constituent services for veterans affairs, social security, IRS, Medicare. Also oversees our congressional art competition as well as military academy appointments. And military academy appointment is a very important part of what we do because those who are appointed to our academies are appointed by nomination by members of Congress. The idea is to try and have an opportunity for us to have equal representation from all around the country at our military academies. And we take that very seriously. If you know a student that is going into his or her senior year in high school, they need to contact their office if they are truly interested in the academies. Actually, we ask them to talk to us for their junior year, but those who are going into their senior year need to contact their office very, very quickly. A number of things that are going on now back in Washington DC, as you are aware, we're still dealing with a very unwieldy budget. We've not done the things that I think we need to do. Those of us in the House have passed out a budget. We've done that for the last three years. The Senate has refused to even pass a budget, which is of concern because you can't negotiate a difference with another party unless they come to the table. And we haven't had them come to the table, which means that we haven't adopted a budget. And that is one of the problems that we have in trying to get our overall spending under control. Secondly, we have something known as the farm bill, the large ag bill, that is a multi-year authorization, meaning it authorizes the various programs dealing with various commodities, food stamp program, nutrition programs, the various programs that deal with what is happening on the farms and the ranches. That authorization is due to expire and there was a failure of the Senate and the House to get together on this yet. There is a bill that has been produced by the agriculture committee, but it has not come to the floor because frankly, not 218 votes for it yet. So as you are aware, there's a major drought going on through a good deal of the country. It's affecting many of those who provide our food. And we did vote for a drought relief program the last day or one of the last couple of days before we went to, before we came home. Unfortunately, the Senate's not acted on that. Hopefully, the Senate will act on that fairly quickly. There are a number of things that have to get done at some point in time. A spending that is approval of the spending for this next fiscal year. And it appears that we may end up voting for what's known as a CR, a continuing resolution. That's a disappointment as far as I'm concerned because that postpones the tough decisions we have to make, but I suspect that that will be what we end up doing. There's something known as a lame duck session. That's a session where the members of Congress and the current Congress come back after the next election and continue until the end of this term. So the members of Congress, including some who have already announced their retirements, they weren't, would not have been on the ballot in November or defeated, but they come back and by the constitution are allowed to continue to serve until the end of the year. So if you have a session after the election and before the new Congress comes in, it's called a lame duck session. Most times that I have seen it, it's been a rare occurrence. And when it's been decided that that will occur, you find out about it the day before the election or the day after the election. This is the first time in my memory where six months ago, we were basically notified that we would have a lame duck session. We are scheduled now, the week after the election, that following week, the Tuesday of the next week, to go back into session for a lame duck session. The week after that will be Thanksgiving. Members will, will be able to go home for that week of Thanksgiving. Then we're scheduled to come back the following week. So we'll have at least two weeks of a lame duck session. And the reason I mention that is it is unusual because normally you don't count on lame duck session. There's an effort to get a lot of things done before the election. This probably means that it will, in fact, have a number of different issues dealt with in that lame duck session. The question is, how long will those things have a duration? In other words, will they just get us to the next Congress? Within the several months of the next Congress that require the new Congress to work on it, or would it be an entire fiscal year? That remains to be seen. So those are some of the things that are going on back there. We have had, I've had town hall meetings ever since I've been in Congress, tell town halls, we started those for members of Congress and we do those. But still, there are those who believe that not enough messages are heard from home to take back to Washington DC. So we have tried to change the format somewhat to allow more input from the constituents and those who are here. So what we are doing with this town hall meeting, I call it a town hall slash listening session, is give anybody and everybody an opportunity to speak. We'll see how many people line up for it. We'll, we'll start and see if we could do a limitation of five minutes and if, in fact, we have so many people that it doesn't look like we can take care of everybody in the hour and 17 minutes that we would have, we'll put it down to three minutes. We'll start with five minutes and we'd ask you just to come up, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, from the district, and then let us know, you know, you can give a comment, ask a question, make a statement, tell us what kind of a message you would like us to deliver back in Washington DC. Bob will be the timekeeper. So we'll start with five minutes. We'll see how that goes. And as I say, if there's somebody that lined up that we need to cut it down, we'll do it for three minutes. So both my district director and my chief of staff will be taking notes along with me. So, sir.
If I could, I could kind of hand out where you are.
Well, I'll just take your Bob.
And one of those characters, the other representative that's over here. Anyways, what I'm looking at is.
Is the mic on for your folks here?
There we go.
There we go.
Well, I personally just got solar for my house and I really, really, really like the solar. I think it's a great idea. But more so, you look in this room and you think, what is the Elk Grove cost for this room right here? Well, we have policemen, so we, you know, there's that cost here, but there's also the cost of the room and there's the cost of the lighting, electricity for the air conditioning itself.
So it doesn't feel like ground.
True, true. But it doesn't feel better when you're wearing shorts like me.
Yes.
Anyways, what, what I've done is put together. My name is Mark Beatty and I apologize because I'm disabled because of an ATD accident about three years ago, so I'm just trying to get by that, but I apologize. Anyways, I've written down a list of some things that I think they're good and I'm just going to repeat this, you guys got a copy, but just so the audience kind of hears this. Who pays about the panels, about the companies that can work, you can do for, for you, other places we can do it as far as this locations. So the DMV building, that's one that we're all familiar with down in Sacramento, very Elk Grove, because we drive by it so often. Do you know the DMV building is a multi, what is it, 13, 14-story building? It's on the left, just as Highway 99 splits off to Business 80 right there. And it's got a huge parking lot. You think about something like that is a great solar opportunity because what I would envision was not having the government just put out the chunk of change for the solar, but basically no cost to the government, meaning get gifts for the 20% down and have the government just pay their electric bills just like they normally, but they're not paying it to the electricity company, they're paying it now to the finance company, the finances and solar. Does that make sense? As you were shaking your head. So in less than 10 years, much less than 10 years, this system is paid for and there's no power used whatsoever. So all this power that we're using here, it doesn't count. It does not count at all. And I envision this system, the, the system really is a good way for us to get out of the problems that we're in right now. As a country, we're really seeing the economic downturn right now, but this is a good way for us, think of it as a country, if we were to have something like this going right now, we'd be much better off. If we had something like this active, it would, it would be another boon, really would. Anyways, do you have any questions?
No, I'm going to do is have everybody speak off right this spot.
Okay. Let me.
I'm Sherri Hagan and I live in Elk Grove. I'd like to talk about some of the words we've been hearing lately on the news that include such things as Medicare and Ryan Plan and privatization, I think, are the issues that I want to hear from you about. I could tell you a little story that starts back in, well, I could go back. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran and I'm also a retiree currently. And in 1972, I had an opportunity to make a choice in the state of California about whether or not I would coordinate with social security. And I made the choice because of what I was hearing, that social security would not be there for me. It's the same thing I'm hearing now. The reality is that it is here for me. I'm here now and I basically don't understand how Congress can continually borrow money from social security and say it's going away. I think that the privatization of Medicare, of social security are areas that we've seen the type of results that we get from privatization with the happenings in 2009 with the stock market crashing and people relying on IRAs and other devices to fund their retirement. A lot of people are still working because that dream went away. So when I'm looking at what I'm hearing now, I'm hearing that there's a great desire to privatize our world yet again and take away the social programs that support people who cannot be expected to be able to take care of themselves. So my question to get into actually a yes or no area, did you vote for the Ryan Plan? And if, if you can talk a little bit about the positive effects of what you think the Ryan Plan could be for, not me, because I'm past the age, but for my children and my grandchildren because they're the ones I'm concerned about, they're the reason I stand here, they're the ones that I am just really afraid for with what's being put out there.
Don't be shy, there's plenty of opportunity for anybody to come up. Give me your message.
Sorry, your constitutional law, your constitutional law is probably pretty good based on what you do for a living. So I have to assume that you're aware that it's the job of the House of Representatives to put together a bill and the job of the Senate to say yes or no. It's not the job of the Senate to negotiate anything. So do you have any plans to put together a bill, a budget bill, that there's any hope of the Senate passing? And aren't you wasting your money and hours and everybody else's if what you intend to do is twiddle your thumbs and otherwise pass things through the House of Representatives that have no chance of going anywhere else?
Okay, I'll respond when we get through all the comments, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm James Rowell, it's a veteran. I live in Elk Grove. The main concerns that I have are the same as many in this room. We all understand the tight budget issues, but as a veteran, some of the concerns that I have have to do with potential sequestration, veteran entitlements, especially in today's age when we have so many young men and women coming back from Afghanistan now or other parts of the country with traumatic brain injuries and other injuries that during my tenure in Vietnam, we probably wouldn't have survived in. But today, we need to take care of those people. As a veteran, it behooves me to be your conscience, if I may, because it's very convenient for our senators and congresspeople to remember.
Hi, my name is Margie Metzler, and I have been very concerned about the Ryan Medicare killing proposal. And I'm wondering if, I know I discussed this with one of your staff members in DC, and he reassured me that I personally would not lose my Medicare. And I was a person who was without medical care for four years, because I got laid off from a job that had medical care when I was 61. And I worked as many as two and three jobs, none of which provided medical care during that period of time. So, it wasn't for lack of working, it was for lack of finding a job that provided medical care. And so, anything that's going to do something to Medicare is very scary for me. And when I discussed this with one of your staff people, he said, "Well, you'll be fine, because we're not going to touch yours." But I really wonder why you would think that those of us who have Medicare are willing to kick the rest of the people under the bus.
Go, girl.
My name is Jefferson McGee. I'm a resident of Florence. Recently, you won the historical election and represent the 7th District in the United States House of Representatives. I live in the 7th District. And several times, a group of us came to your office to discuss, voice what we feel about the Ryan Bill, voice what we feel about the Bush tax cuts. And, you know, me personally, I have voiced what I felt about your ADA and what you pushed it, and I think it takes away civil rights from, you know, disabled individuals. So, we wanted to discuss these things. And several times, we've been in, we sat in the office, we brought 14 people in your office the other day, spoke with your staff, and they said she were in town, and we just asked for a phone call. We just asked you to say, "Hey, recognize us." Well, we stayed a little longer, we all got up, we made, we made appointments with your appointment, the person that makes appointments. And we, as we made the appointments, she asked what our issues were, and they were varied. And, you know, it was about 14 of us, you know. To say, you know, we're probably 90% African-American, or probably even more than that, I think we're probably a couple of European-Americans in the group of us. And as of today, we haven't heard anything. We haven't heard one, one response from anybody that scheduled. No one's called, no one's said, "Well, we can't do it." These are important, our voice is important. I mean, right now, you're running for the 7th Congressional District, and you're going to represent us if you win. And we, no one's campaigning in the area. We've asked you several times, and we understand where you're coming from, that you cannot go into representing Matsui's District and hold a town hall meeting. But somehow, you have to come, you have to come into Florence and campaign. If you don't want to, I understand. But the only, what I took out of it all, when I left your office and I waited several weeks and we got no response, you know, the next question is, is it because of the way we looked, or is it because of our race that we didn't get any response back? And, you know, so I'll let you answer that when you get around to it.
My name is Don Goot, I live in Elk Grove. My concern is, all I hear from your party is repeal Obamacare, repeal Obamacare. You had several votes in the House saying repeal Obamacare, wasting time having something that you know will not pass onto the Senate. Everybody in this room, if they cancel their auto insurance, they won't cancel it unless they have something to replace it with. You're repealing something, and you're not replacing it with anything. You've got this talk about it, but you don't, you don't know what you're going to replace with, what you're repealing. That's all I have to say.
Hello, Congressman Lowndran. My name is Keith Weryk, I live in Elk Grove. I came here tonight with my son, and we both didn't know what we were getting into. I didn't know you were coming into the belly of the beast here, when I see. But I'd like to appreciate what you did for my son. He's going to be at Ebel this Sunday, and you gave this recognition. That was why we came to thank you for that, and also to listen to what you had to say. But I'd like to add a little comment here, because, like I said, seeing what's around me here, I think what you need, what I see lately in the paper, your opponent, Amy Barra, he seems to have a lot of influence, money-wise, from the George Soros family, I didn't know that. I think that needs to be brought out, so a lot of people understand what is funding him, because he seems to be painting your picture more for what he is. And I think there's a lot of untruth in that. I appreciate what you've done, what you're doing, and that's all I can say. Thank you so much.
Hello, Congressman Lowndran. My name is Keith Weryk, I live in Elk Grove. I came here tonight with my son, and we both didn't know what we were getting into. I didn't know you were coming into the belly of the beast here, when I see. But I'd like to appreciate what you did for my son. He's going to be at Ebel this Sunday, and you gave this recognition. That was why we came to thank you for that, and also to listen to what you had to say. But I'd like to add a little comment here, because, like I said, seeing what's around me here, I think what you need, what I see lately in the paper, your opponent, Amy Barra, he seems to have a lot of influence, money-wise, from the George Soros family, I didn't know that. I think that needs to be brought out, so a lot of people understand what is funding him, because he seems to be painting your picture more for what he is. And I think there's a lot of untruth in that. I appreciate what you've done, what you're doing, and that's all I can say. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Alexis DeCle, and I'm from Elk Grove. I'm going to be a college senior at University of the Pacific. And so, I have honestly a lot of issues that I kind of want to have some clarification on, but I think the main reason that I've come here tonight is, I know that you voted, and correct me if my information is wrong, but you voted to repeal funding for Planned Parenthood. And as a graduating senior that has issues with health coverage, and honestly, when I had my first cervical screen, I was told that I was at risk for cancer, and I'm only 21. So, the services that Planned Parenthood provide are really important to me. So, I would like to know that if you vote to repeal Planned Parenthood, is that something, would you like to see Planned Parenthood services removed from California for students and other women like myself? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alice. I'm from Elk Grove. I'm here to talk about Social Security. We've already heard a little bit about it, but I'm really worried about what Social Security is going. We all know that the way it's going right now is not sustainable, and I'm probably not going to see a dime. So, my parents have always really stressed to me how important it is to manage my own finances and to invest my money wisely. So, I want to know what you're going to be doing to make sure that Social Security is solvent, and whether or not, I've heard mixed things about what you're going to be doing with Ryan Plan and privatization. And I want to know if we're going to be able to fix it and maybe move towards something that's more market-based.
Congressman Lowndran, I'm Scott Sanders, recently of the US Navy. I wanted to ask a brief question. While I was overseas, I was watching a lot of the news, and I saw what appeared to be disassembly of the system that I have served to protect, Medicare being one of the big ones in the news right now, but there are multiple examples. And my question being, now that Representative Ryan is Vice President Select, do you believe that the GOP should make the reforming of Medicare into a voucher system an official part of this platform? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Markell Sparks Jeffries. I live in the Rescindover area, but I actually have a question. Why did you vote in favor of the Paul Ryan budget, not knowing how affected constituents? It affected me a lot, because if you take money away from education, I won't be able to get my education, I won't be able to make it further in life. And I want to one day be successful, and, you know, me being a foster, me being a foster kid, I don't have family, I don't have, I don't have wealth like that towards it. I can pay for school. I really have to rely on the government to help me pay for school, with the government and myself being, and I doubt me being unemployed, that's what is going to make it even harder for myself. So, I just wanted to know, why did you vote that way, vote that way, and really hurt the people you wish to represent? I also want to add on to what Mr. McGee had to say. You know, I was in the office too, as well. And we were in your office for about seven hours, and we didn't get a call, text, email, nothing. And, you know, I just want to know why we haven't been heard, we've gotten no return from you guys. We came at you guys with multiple petitions, you know. Do you have the stack?
Meet with your constituents.
Meet with your constituents. And then, we should have to go to a town hall to be able to talk to you, we should be able to hold a meeting and actually be able to talk to you face-to-face, because if we're your constituents, you know, you should be able to address us, ask if you're constituents. There should be a change, you know. We're the people, and we have a voice, but, you know, you represent us, so you represent our voice, so we need that voice to be represented. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Wise, I'm a resident here of Elk Grove. My question is a little bit personal, actually. I've been trying for two years to get into college with, into some sort of college without success, but during that time period, I reassessed my priorities for what I want to do for a large portion of my life. It has been a burning desire in my heart for a long time to serve the United States Marine Corps as an officer. However, I discovered this a little too, I'm concerned a little too late. I'm now 20 years old. I'm, I was told, I did some research, that it is still possible to get into the United States Naval Academy at an age no older than 24. However, I was told by a naval, a Navy man, that it's actually 21 years old that is the too-late time period. Also, with the military being, to an effect, starting to downsize, especially with the Marine Corps, with the war in Iraq and Afghanistan winding down, would it still be possible, if I were to get into the Naval Academy and graduate as a Marine Corps officer, would it still be possible that I'd be able to make it in with the military greatly downs, with the military beginning to downsize? You know, with all the freedoms that we talk about defending, and all the troubles that our nation has, it's still one nation under God, and it is with liberty and freedom for all, it's still worth fighting for, and it's still worth dying for. And if possible, I would love to be able to get into the United States Military Academy, graduate, and serve the country that has given me so much. Thank you, sir.
Hello, Mr. Lowndran. My name is Sue Cologne, and I'm a resident of Sacramento, and that's S-I-O-U-X. I'm a Native American. And I'm also here because I'm a cannabis patient, and it's my understanding in 1996, you were the Attorney General, and you were mandated by law to make safe access for the medical cannabis community, and you didn't. In fact, I heard you aided and abetted in the federal raids, and it seems to me that it's really confusing that these people don't know that you haven't addressed any issues in California. So, what makes you eligible to do any of these issues? And you have women's health care, and you're a dude. And as a dude, it is so overwhelming that you're going to be dealing with women's ovaries and uterus, and that you have gajones major to do this with our female parts. And this is really interesting, that I am being respectful, because I didn't name anything. So, here's the point, I would like you to listen to your constituents for all the things you do, sir, all the way back to the very beginning, when you started in California. I would like to know why you have not addressed the issues that you were mandated by law to address, as far as Proposition 215 and the medical cannabis community. That has a lot to do with female parts and health care.
Good evening, Congressman Lowndran. My name is Lisa Garcia. And actually, it's funny, because as I'm listening to some of these people talk about having the opportunity and listening to your constituents, I actually thought that that's what this town hall meeting was supposed to be about, is an opportunity for the community to come, to hear what you have to say, and then to maybe ask you for clarification on certain things. I really didn't realize this was going to be a bullying pulpit tonight, so I'm a little appalled at what I'm seeing here. I personally have lived in Sacramento my whole life, and I have watched your career through the years. I think that you have done some great things, and it is funny, because we always find time to tell people what we don't like about them, we find time to complain when we go to restaurants, we very seldom take the time to tell people thank you. And I think that it's important that people keep in mind that as you served as the Attorney General for this state, you've actually done some very good things. I know that you were a huge part of working on the Megan's Law. I also know crime rates, actually, when you were Attorney General, were much lower than what they are now. And I also know that the Three Strikes Law, you were very instrumental in helping also. So, I think it's important that we remember that you are here to represent all of the people, and I want to just personally thank you for the opportunity to come here, and thank you for the good things that you've done, because I don't think that everything that we're hearing tonight is fair. So, I personally just want to thank you as a constituent, so.
Hello, my name is Warren Hardy. I'm one of your constituents for the last 42 years. I've been an elected Parks Director for over 36 years, so I'm very involved in the environment and the concerns that they have. I'd like to know what your beliefs are on climate change, and have you voted against pollution controls? Thank you.
Congressman Lowndran, I'm Jefferson McGee. I was just wondering when you were going to start representing the 99%. We were in your office, as you heard, you couldn't give us a phone call, nothing. You were signing off on the wealthy, the 1%. And I'm jobless, when are you going to start creating jobs for us around here and listen to us? And I just want to have a second.
Hi, Congressman. My name's John, I live right in Carmichael, and I had a question for you. On a recent telephone town hall meeting you had, you mentioned that you were in favor of a consumption tax, and I was wondering what exactly you meant by that, and how that would affect small business. Thank you.
Congressman Lowndran, you've several times, along with your colleagues, spent time trying to repeal a law that, I'm Bob Laurent from Pennsylvania, trying to repeal a law, and sending repeal law to the Senate when you know the Senate's not going to hear it. There's many important issues that you and your colleagues have not been addressing. The law that you keep trying to repeal is one that has saved my life. I was diagnosed with cancer as a result of going in for my screening. I was diagnosed with cancer as a result of going in for my screening. My job does not provide insurance because I have Obamacare, found the cancer, got it removed. Every time you vote for that, I feel like you want me dead. I don't think that I appreciate that. In fact, I know I don't appreciate that. And I think that if you had represented your constituents better, you would be getting more positive feedback from the comments here rather than...
Hello, my name is William Epper. I live here in Elk Grove. I have concerns that there, there are many nonprofit agencies that are hurt all over America because people who pay taxes, they're only limited 50%. It used to be 100%. Many people support nonprofits and we ask you to support them 100% for nonprofit agencies and support them. I appreciate that. Thank you.